I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Morganton City Council, November 6, 2023, to order. We have no but one to sign up for public comments, correct? If you'll please rise, I'm going to ask Chris Hawkins if he'll lead us a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask our city attorney if he'll lead us in an invocation, please.
Not here.
I don't see him.
All right. Please join me in thinking about this day. Gracious Lord, we thank you for another beautiful fall day. We thank you for the opportunity to be here as a deliberative body, to think about and to do the business of this city. We thank you for the tremendous turnout of people tonight who have many different interests here and are here to celebrate, to consider, to be part of our community. We thank you for this community and for all of its many blessings, its challenges, its beauty, and all the great things that happen here. And we pause now to ask your presence in guiding these elected officials as they go about the city's business. From Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen. First thing on our agenda is a special presentation by Jessica Rossi of Kimley Horn. If you'll come forward, Jess, thank you for being here, and I'll let you make your presentation.
Great. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, council. My name is Jessica Rossi. I am a planner and economist with Kimley Horn, but I'm also here tonight representing the North Carolinas chapter of the American Planning Association. Our chapter is thrilled to award the city of Morganton with a Great Places Award for a truly great transformation of the Old Courthouse Square. North Carolina Great Places was established in 2012 to highlight North Carolina's wonderful places and the communities and peoples that have created them. North Carolina is full of amazing locations that make this state a wonderful place to live, bring important money and jobs into our economy, and keep our communities thriving. In reviewing possible projects, we consider the applicant's uniqueness, the benefit of the larger community, and how public input shaped the outcome. Old Courthouse Square is a focal point for Morganton, representing the heart of the county, the city, and the surrounding community. The renovation project began in September 2020 with the $4 million project opening back up to the public in May 2022, just in time to kick off the annual TGIF Summer Concert Series. Through the pandemic and supply chain challenges, the 1.7 acre public space in the heart of downtown was redesigned for more inviting daily use to create a permanent stage, restroom, and amphitheater space for the community concerts and events. It's truly an activated space, and it's used daily even when there's no programming occurring: a quick outdoor lunch, a short stroll, or just to hang out. Community efforts towards the Old Courthouse transformation were years in the making through public input and planning. Beginning with the Morganton Downtown Master Plan in 1996 and further solidified in 2018 update of that plan, the community provided input on the use, the design of the space. The final design, construction drawings, and oversight were awarded and carried out by Stimel Landscape Architects in Landscape Planning and Stitch Architects, both out of Winston-Salem, North Carolina. The project was a partnership between the city of Morganton and Burke County, with Morganton taking the lead. In addition to public funds, the project also garnered support through local and state grants, as well as local, private, individual, and business donations. When reviewing applications, the North Carolina American Planning Association Awards Committee, we were immediately impressed with how the Morganton Old Courthouse Square renovation project accomplished a long-awaited transformation from an underutilized public space into an inviting, thriving, and easy-to-use space for all. Our committee was impressed that preservation art and maintaining historical elements formed the basis of the plan design, and we were excited that the project preserved Morganton's most public and historic open space while at the same time updating it and bringing it forward with modern amenities such as underground utilities, Wi-Fi, public restroom ADA accessibility, a food truck court, stormwater control, and the Veterans Memorial and expanded programming. The North Carolina chapter of the American Planning Association is proud to call the Old Courthouse Square "a great transformation," and we celebrate the special place that you created in the heart of your community. Congratulations to the city of Morganton and everyone who was involved.
I'd like to call Sharon Jablonski up. Yes, if Michael Burley and Sharon will come forward.
Well, Michael gets you in the right spot.
It's a great project. We've heard so many good comments from people in town and especially our visitors about the space, so a great honor. And we had some who sponsored it. I'd like for them to please stand and be recognized. Y'all please stand.
Several people came earlier, had to leave.
Okay, let's give them a hand. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. This time, I'd like to introduce council to my far-right Wendy Cato, our mayor pro temp, Chris Jernigan, city council, Louie Vina, our city attorney, I'm Ronnie Thompson, your mayor, Sally Sandy, our city manager, Butch McSwain, our city council, Chris Hawkins, city council, and Renee Carswell. And I have a special announcement for Renee Carswell. She has completed her clerk certification, so we are proud that she's finished her certification. We also have Danette Stillman Bridges and Ernest Williams, who is interpreting for our deaf community. I have several public advocacy. One announcement tomorrow, November 7th, is Election Day, please vote. An announcement that the city of Morganton has been awarded the Government Finances Officers' Association Certificate of Appreciation for Excellent in Financial Planning for 2022. And Jesse Paris, our financial director, and the city of Morganton Finance Department has been awarded an award of Financial Reporting Achievement in recognition of being primarily responsible for earning their certificate. An announcement that Morganton Public Safety has been awarded a Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation grant in the amount of $29,816.24 for the purchase of rescue equipment. An announcement that Public Safety has been awarded a Molded Fiberglass Foundation Recon Commando e-bike grant in the amount of $15,150 to be used for the purchase of four e-bikes to be used on our Greenway system and at major events and festivals to better serve the city of Morganton. Nick Stafanak, is he here? If he'll come forward, please. And Chief, if you'll come forward, please.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening. The MFG Foundation, every year is able to donate to a government unit or a nonprofit. One of our teammates was made aware of the need for e-bikes for public safety, and we were able to make that happen this year. It's fitting because public safety has come to MFG's calling quite a few times, and so it's nice to be able to give back to them, and in turn, they're able to help the community with the e-bikes, so thank you.
Okay, our next announcement is the Community Appearance Advisory Commission Merit Awards. I'll ask Cheryl Gratton, the chairman of our Community Appearance Advisory Commission, to come forward to present those awards.
And James.
And I think James Bagley is going to help also.
James Bagley, if you'll assist, please.
I'm Cheryl Gratton, and I'm the chairman of the Morganton Community Appearance Advisory Commission, and this is James Bagley, vice chair. The Community Appearance Advisory Commission is a mayor-appointed citizen commission that initiates, assists, and advises our city council on community aesthetic and beautification issues. We're here tonight to present the annual Community Appearance Merit Awards for commercial properties that have gone above ordinance requirements and are making a significant upgrade to the appearance of Morganton. By their example, they are encouraging others to do the same, therein elevating our city's appearance to a higher standard of living. At this time, I'd like to ask the Community Appearance Advisory Commission members to come up and better hear. It's you, Leslie. Before distributing the awards, we would like to once again recognize the partners who contributed to the historic Courthouse Square renovations. Since completion, there have been numerous well-attended activities that have taken place on our beautiful square. It draws citizens and visitors alike, promoting a public and private investment. These events give us all opportunity to gather in our hometown, which helps to strengthen local relationships and instill a sense of civic pride and ownership of this place that we call home. When residents work together to maintain and improve our town, it becomes the best possible place for us all to live. Now for the awards. We have four recipients this year, and the first is Burke Arts Council, and we ask those representatives to join the others up front. Get organized here. Okay. This award is given to Burke Arts Council in appreciation for its contribution to the enhanced appearance of the city of Morganton and for the renovations to buildings and grounds that have already taken place. The eye-catching mural on the side of the building can be enjoyed on the southern approach to downtown. Also, the new attractive landscaping and improvements are all significant contributions to the visual promotion that is taking place in our city. The commission looks forward to your continued property restoration. Okay. All right. Thank you. Do you have any words to say? That's great. Okay. The second award for 2023 goes to Murphy's Farm Apartments, and we ask that those representatives join us up front. This award is given for Murphy's Farm Apartments' contribution to the enhanced appearance of the city of Morganton for the renovations to historic buildings and incorporating these incorporation of these important structures into your project. The commission looks forward to your continued improvements and restoration of nearby historic structures. Okay, James.
Do y'all have any comments?
Thank you, guys, for the warm welcome. We love being here, and we look forward to continuing to provide excellent housing services to the community, which our owners, homeserviced, could be here with us, but we know that they're celebrating down in South Carolina with us, and thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you. All right. I'm James Bagley, the vice chair of the committee. The third award for 2023 goes to Grace Ridge Retirement Community. We ask that those representatives go ahead and join us up front. This award is given in appreciation for its contribution to the enhanced appearance of the city of Morganton for previous upgrades to the curb appeal and accompanying artfully designed manicured entrance landscaping, along with ongoing high standards of grounds maintenance. The commission looks forward to your continued beautification efforts.
Thank you for the award. We really appreciate it. We have such great partnerships with our residents to continue to help keep our appearance up.
The fourth award for 2023 goes to Alpine Mill, number seven. We ask that those representatives join us up front now, please. All right. This award is given for its contribution in renovating and restoring the historic Alpine Cotton Mill into mixed-use development, including office space and retail space, as well as 60 fully leased apartments contributing to the overall curb appeal and enhanced appearance of our city. The communication looks forward to your continued beautification efforts in this location. And if you have a few words, please.
I was recently going through our photo album. I'm Jenny Irwin. I manage Alpine Mill. This is my right and left arm, though. This is Wes Ward, he's our building and maintenance director, and then Jane Pester, who manages the grounds. But recently, I was looking through pictures, and I came across the ribbon cutting, and many of you were there, and you've seen what we had before, you know, during construction and now, and everyone in this room played such an integral part, the council, the county did. Anyway, thank you all so much. Mike Fox is here. He held my hand the whole way. And I needed a lot of it. So, thank you so much for coming alongside us. It was a big project for us and our family. I was 24 when we bought it, and my dad, I just finished a building downtown, and dad said, "Oh, Jen, it's the same thing, it's just a little bit bigger." Anyway, thank you all so much for your welcome and for your support. We do our best there. We fail at times, but we certainly try. And anyway, so thankful to be in this community. Thank you.
The Community Appearance Advisory Commission appreciates the dedicated efforts of these four entities and asks that we all do our part, no matter how small, to improve the appearance of our community. Let's keep Morganton beautiful and thriving. Thank you.
Tighten up.
Oh, look at that here.
All right, ready?
Thank you, bud. Good to see you.
Thank you to our award winners and also to the committee for selecting them. It's a great job. Next, I have some announcement. The MADE Competition Awards. I'll ask Abby Gentry Nelson to come forward, our Main Street Coordinator, and Paul Gant with the Burke County Schools. Give them a hand.
I'll try not to talk too much. I'll let Paul do that, since he's the technical genius behind what makes MADE MADE. But this year, back, let's see, October 20th, was the Sixth Annual Morganton Art Design and Engineering Competition, which just so happens to be one of the most successful and award-winning event series that collaborates education and industry partners here in Burke County. It gives Burke County students a chance to experience STEAM-based activities that build skills relevant to many of our area industries. MADE encourages students to think outside of the box, I'll say, and engages participants in critical thinking, design, engineering, innovation. This year, we had our biggest event to date with 14 teams competing in middle school division and high school division. And a little bit later, I'll have our first, second, and third place winners in both of those divisions come up to be recognized. But this is a wonderful event, of which we were able to raise over $4,000, to give back to our classrooms, to continue on innovation and technology advancements within our education systems here with our students. And that's all due in huge part to our sponsors, and I think we still have some here. So I just want to say thank you to Work in Burke, City of Morganton, Burke County, Continental, Levitin, Opportunity Threads, Case Farms, Burke County Public Schools, TOS, Western Piedmont Community College, and NCSSM Morganton for their support in making this event happen. It's a production of the Historic Morganton Festival, so not only do we do that big a festival in September in the Friday Night Concert Series and the Farmers Market we started May in 2018, and I'm proud to continue that on. So Paul will give you a little insight into what happened back on the 20th, and then we'll recognize our award winners.
This year's competition was, it was a big one. We decided to go a little large this year, since we had the space at the commo, which was very nice to have. And so we tasked them with creating a structure that was both artistically pleasing and also technically correct. But we set it up pretty difficult, where they were going to have to choose to make something that wasn't perfect. They're going to have to make some trade-offs with their design instead of aiming for a perfect solution, which we all tend to do. We forced them to make trade-offs and pick great versus not-so-great here, and seeing where it all came out with the points battle at the, excuse me, at the very end. I would dare say all of the contestants that came up here or that will come up here will say that it was difficult. They were stressed, and that was part of the deal. We want students to learn how to handle these stresses and put it together with smart thinking, and when those two things come together, sometimes stress and smart thinking and speed and time limits, and that's where the magic happens lots of times. And so every student and every participant here will say that what they made was not what they wanted, that it wasn't perfect. But that's all right. That's what we're trying to teach with these competitions. Like, sometimes you just have to jump in and do it and get your hands dirty, and through that innovative process and problem solving, they all come together with some pretty unique and well-thought-out solutions. If you were fortunate enough to walk through and see the solutions or the pictures of them, every group had their own twist and their own way to see the solution to the problem, and that's what we're trying to pull up out of these students, because it serves them well, it serves us well, it serves the community well as we move forward, because we need people who think on their toes and can assess a situation and give us the best answers. It's good for everybody involved. And so I'm very proud to celebrate these students today and their coaches, because the coaches, boy, they chipped in a lot today. They calmed down some scared nerves in students that didn't think they were going to finish, but we all pulled together, and we put forth some great products. And the turnout of the students here tonight, I think, speaks volumes to like what they put into this competition. They cared, and you could tell by the end of the great work they did. So I'm very proud to do our part, but it's all for the students and for the community and for everybody here in Morganton and Burke County. So thanks to everybody who showed up. And Abby's going to give you a nice list of the middle school and high school winners.
Paul, can you tell them what they had to do?
Oh, yeah. Sorry. It sounds kind of odd, but we had them create a gravity-powered marble roller coaster so they could build the structure up tall. They put a marble up on it, and it would have to go through and perform tricks, like loops and funnels and corkscrews, and they had to make all these things from scratch on-site. And they also had a budget, so they had to use fake money to buy their materials to what was important to their own task. So it wasn't like, here's a pile of stuff. It's like, what's important to you, different values for different things, and they had to actually like the whole thing. The full design process was in the place for today. So the fact that we got the results that we did, I think everybody's proud, and if you were there watching at the end, I think everybody's like, well, this is going to be a train wreck. And then at the very last hour, as always happens when you do these things, the last hour, it just all shows up, and it all comes together. It was a really fun one to watch, and these students and participants just did a wonderful job. I'm very proud of all of them.
All right. So I'm going to ask, because I think we've got quite a few up here, so I'll call the middle school up, have a picture, and then I'll call the high school up. And third place in our middle school division was East Burke Middle School. In second place was Morganton Day School. And first place in the middle school division was New Dimensions. All right, thank y'all. And in our high school division, third place was the North Carolina School for the Deaf. Second place was Patton High School. And in first place was NCSSM Morganton. And each team had five people, so thank you all for coming and being representatives of your teams.
Lots of great talent, and Abby and Paul, thank you so much for a great competition.
Ronnie, I'd like to add that Abby had her two-year-old the whole day due to an illness, so she did really well that day.
Thank you, Abby. Okay, next on our agenda is a proclamation for Burke County Nonprofit Day. I'd like to read that proclamation. Whereas charitable nonprofit organizations throughout Burke County save taxpayers thousands of dollars through their services and contribute significantly to the high quality of life for all citizens, and whereas these organizations are committed to serving the educational, cultural, civic, health, religious, human, and animal services, recreational, philanthropic, environmental, and other diverse needs of Burke County, and whereas the staff and volunteers of all And whereas the staff and volunteers of all Burke County nonprofit organizations are dedicated to upholding the highest standards of community service, donating their time and effort to make any difference in the lives of others. And whereas Tuesday, November 28, 2023, observance of Burke County, North Carolina nonprofit, AKA One Burke Gives, provides a unique opportunity for the citizens of Burke County to join together in appreciation and support of the many contributions made by nonprofit organizations to our continued well-being while boosting awareness for continued growth. Now therefore, I, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor of the City of Morganton, to hereby proclaim Tuesday, November 28, 2023, as Burke County NC Nonprofit Day, also known as One Burke County Gives, and encourage all citizens to recognize the positive impact nonprofit organizations have on the quality of life of the citizens of Burke County. Issued this sixth day of November, 2023, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, Renee Carswell, City Clerk. And we have Abigail and Evelyn to make a presentation.
Yes. Thank you so much for having us. We're happy to be here. My name is Abigail Taylor with Burke County United Way.
And my name is Evelyn Vicente Rodriguez. I'm with the Small Business Center at Western Piedmont Community College.
And we're both a part of the planning team for One Burke Gives. So we're really excited for Giving Day coming up. I looked today, and we only have 22 days left to get there, so that is exciting. And this is going to be our fourth year, and of course, our fourth year accepting this proclamation. So One Burke Gives started during COVID. We wanted an interesting way to get nonprofits together, not only to help them raise some funds that I'm sure they lost during COVID, but then also have a safe way for people to get together to fundraise virtually. So we're continuing that, except now we've added a few in-person events that are sort of pop-up events locally throughout that day. And it'll be super fun because it's a Tuesday right after Thanksgiving. And so that is the Tuesday, of course, right after Thanksgiving. One Burke Gives is hosted by Burke County United Way, which we decided to, that we're happy to do that again for the fourth year. And we host that completely free for all nonprofits in Burke County that want to join us on our website. So they sign up. All they have to do is sign up, do a profile on our webpage, and then they can fundraise with us. So last year, we had 30 nonprofits. It looks like this year, we're going to have 34. And last year, we were able to raise more than $100,000 in one day together. So we're hoping that we can push it even more and do more this year, and we hope that everyone can join us. So thank you.
I'm going to ask Chris Dernigan if he'll deliver that proclamation. Have another proclamation. Next is National Apprenticeship Week. So as apprenticeships have been a cornerstone of skill development and workforce enrichment, contributing significantly to the growth and prosperity of our nation, state, and community. And whereas the spirit of innovation and dedication exhibited by apprentices enhances the economic competitiveness of our city and state by fostering excellence and promoting continuous learning. And whereas the collaboration between businesses, trade organizations, and educational partners highlight the power of partnerships in advancing workforce development. And whereas apprenticeships are a strategy to ensure that opportunities are accessible to individuals from all walks of life. And whereas Western Piedmont Community College's PACE program, in collaboration with numerous Burke County employers, has afforded our citizens opportunities to develop skills that lead to high-wage jobs. And whereas National Apprenticeship Week provides an opportunity to recognize apprentices, employers, colleges, and partners for contributing to a skilled workforce. And whereas the celebrations during this week not only honor the achievements of apprenticeships, but also inspire new generations to pursue vocational education and apprenticeships opportunity, bolstering our nation's workforce of the future. And whereas the commitment to apprenticeship aligns with the goal of maintaining Morganton's competitive advantage as a desirable location for industry, now I, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor of Morganton, to hereby proclaim November 13 through 19, 2023, as National Apprenticeship Week in the City of Morganton, and encourage all citizens, businesses, educational institutions, and community organizations to join in celebrating apprenticeship programs and their positive impact on our city. Adopted this sixth day of November, 2023, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, Renee Carswell, City Clerk. I'm going to ask Butch McSwain if he'll present that and ask Cindy Davis and others to join her at the lectern. Cindy, you're going to have to identify all the people coming forward, please.
We have Dean Rick First with our Workforce Development and Continuing Education. We have John Petty with Leviton. We have Cara Ray with Human Resources at Leviton. And we also have Eric Childress with Continental Automotive.
Thank y'all for being here. Butch?
Dr. Davis, with all the last several years' emphasis on apprenticeship, it is sure refreshing to see how that transmits down to our local area. And thank all of you for that, and I'm honored to present this to you. And thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else want to?
Just for a second, I'm Rick First, Dean of Workforce Development at Western Piedmont. When we started the PACE apprenticeship program, it was right in the middle of the pandemic, and we didn't know what to expect. Today, we have 12 employer participants and over 50 apprentices in our county, and we're grateful for partners like these folks that are here with us today and the others who couldn't join us tonight for carrying this program forward. This is great for Burke County, it's great for Morganton, it's great for our employers, and more importantly, it's great for our citizens, and we're thrilled to be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Come on up front. Okay. I have some upcoming events to announce. Our Art in City Hall, Tia Yang with the Monge Storytellers. Ms. Yang is the Values and Culture Director for Industrial Commons. The Monge Storytellers showcase traditional textiles and artifacts from Southeast Asia and art from contemporary Monge American artists, which will continue to be displayed at City Hall during the month of November. Our Holiday Farmer's Market is Saturday, November 18, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at 111 North Green Street. Our Winter Carnival is going to be Saturday, November 18, at 2023, from 2:30 to 5:30 on the Historic Courthouse Square. Our Memorial Tree Lighting for 2023 will be Saturday, November 18, from 5:30 to 6:00 on the Historic Morganton Courthouse Square. Small Business Saturday is Saturday, November 25. Shop all day to celebrate and support our small businesses. And one of my favorite, Breakfast with Santa Claus on 2023, Saturday, December 2, and Saturday, December 9, from 8:30 a.m. or 10 o'clock a.m. at the Morganton Community House. Tickets are on sale at the UPS Store in downtown Morganton. Our Christmas Parade for 2023 is going to be The Sounds of the Holidays on Tuesday, December 5, at 6:00 p.m. in downtown Morganton. And at comma, our Performing Arts Center, Thursday, November 9, we have Jen Kobel Power, it's a power hour of stand-up comedy. And on Thursday, November 30, at 7:30, is Pretty Woman, the Musical. Sally, next is our Municipal Power Agency. Do we have any updates?
Only update is elections are in November.
Okay, thank you. Next is our Consent Agenda. I believe you have seven items. Sally, if you'll take care of those items.
I will. And just so everyone knows what those items are and that we're asking the council to adopt those in a single motion, unless there's an item you'd like removed and discussed separately. And those items are minutes from the October 2 council meeting, tax releases in the amount of $638, a series of budget amendments, a budget amendment for $15,150 to recognize the grant that we talked about earlier tonight for molded fiberglass for the bikes at public safety, a budget amendment in the amount of $29,816.24 is the Firehouse Subs Grant that we talked about earlier for fire and safety equipment. And then also a budget amendment for $4,543.25 to recognize an insurance reimbursement for damage to a public safety vehicle. And then one more budget amendment, which is approving $13,500 from ARPA funding for a change order on the wash station project. And that should be our last one of those. That project is nearing completion. And then a resolution authorizing city staff to accept a grant for $400,000 from North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, which is for the stormwater planning.
Do any members of council wish to have any items removed from the consent agenda? Not allowed to entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Wendy. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Butch. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Under New Business, Public Hearings. Call the public hearing in consideration of applying for a building reuse grant with the North Carolina Department of Commerce for local incentives for a local business identified as project firm. Sally?
Yes, I believe Alan Wood is here tonight.
Alan, if you'll come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, Manager Sandy. We continue to take advantage of the building reuse grant opportunities. I've lost count, honestly.
It's a lot.
It's a lot. At one time last year, between Catawba and Burke, we were running about 35% of these grants for the year. This would, has been moved forward for $200,000 is the amount. It's the creation of 25 jobs. They will average more than the county average wage, which is $43,261. We're asking that the city move this forward. It requires a 5% local match, which would be shared between the county and the City of Morganton. It will be on the county's agenda in December for approval of that. The, goes before the Rural Infrastructure Authority Board on December 7. It will help this company to expand their production capacity and upgrade their facilities. And I can't help but, as I drive through the community and look at the amount of work, we were talking about beautification earlier, and this does definitely help with the appearances. Not only that, but the, it creates a better place to work for our employees in the county. So we really do appreciate your consideration of this grant.
Thank you, Alan. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak for or against this building reuse grant? Seeing no one approach, public hearing is now closed. What's the wish of council?
I'll enter a motion to approve an application in the amount of $200,000 with a 5% local match being shared equally by the city and Burke County, with each paying $5,000 toward the $10,000 total administrative costs.
Thank you, Butch. We have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Alan, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
Okay. Next on our agenda is Consideration Award of a CDBG Entitlement Funds to Nonprofits for Fiscal Year 2023. I'll ask Lisa Helton to come forward. Lisa, thank you for being here.
Good evening. As part of our 2023 action plan, this is our Grants to Nonprofit Program that we do every year, and it's so successful. This year, we have four recommendations to the board to approve. The first is a Meeting Place Recommendation Award of $5,400, and this is to remove 12 trees that's on the property at 813 West Union Street is a problem to not only that property, but the properties around. And one really neat thing is they're going to use the wood as part of their wood ministry so other people in the community can, you know, have benefit from that. So that's a great program. The Salvation Army, $5,000, and this is for their food and pantry program. And we should have at least 240 people to benefit from that. Blue Ridge Community Action, this is something new that we're going to do. They're going to be providing some housing repairs for people in Morganton. So that is $14,350. And then Burke United Christian Ministries, recommend an award of $5,000, and this will be for their rent and utility program.
Thank you, Lisa. What's the wish of council?
Make a motion to award fiscal year 2023 CDBG entitlement funds to nonprofits as outlined.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thanks, Chris. Any discussion? Lisa, some of these are new grants. There's been some people who have gotten grants several times.
Yeah, we did. We had a few, we had the Outreach Center Options in the House of Refuge. They have received funding the past two years consecutive, so we like to give other people a chance. So anytime we have that, we try to give it to the people who have not received funding in the past two years.
Thank you. Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Lisa. Okay. Next is Consideration of Approval to Sell Timber for the Select Cutting of Two Adjoning Parcels Owned by the City of Morganton on Williams Road. Sally?
So the city owns about 40 acres that is located along Williams Road. And you'll recall that back in 2019, we had the Forestry Service and then a Burke County Ranger assess the timber on that property. And at that time, found out that we're looking at timber with an average age of 50 years or more. So we're getting to the point where the timber is going to need to be harvested in order to avoid insect infestation, disease, and the like. So several months back, you allowed us to contract with Raymond Taylor, who is a forester, Taylor Forestry. He has worked for the airport for years in doing this. He does his work for a fee of 6% of the sale price, and he's a turnkey operation. He does the notice, he does the bidding, he's done all that, will ultimately provide the timber deed and secure deposits from the winning bidder, monitor throughout the process, inspections, and all of those things. The buyer will ultimately have up to 24 months to cut the timber off the property. Mr. Taylor took bids, and we received five bids for the property. Those are attached to your information. And the highest bidder came from Gilkey Lumber in the amount of $148,678. And so staff is recommending that you consider approving that bid and awarding that contract. And then Mr. Taylor will take them through the process. And then at some point, we'll come back to you, and I am recommending to you that other than the fee we're paying him, we would like to bring a budget amendment that will basically take this money and put it into our capital reserve fund so that it'll go in there to help whenever we're paying for a capital project so we can reinvest it in an asset, not just burn it on current expenses.
What's the wish of council?
Make a motion to approve the sale of timber to Gilkey Lumber for the amount of $148,678, located on the city-owned property parcels, parcel identification number 2702-169624 and 2702-266786 on Williams Road, and to authorize the mayor and/or city manager to execute such contract and any other necessary documents.
Thank you, Chris. We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Next on our agenda is Consideration of Award of Contract for Utility and Tax Billing and for Payment Processing Platform. I'm going to call Jesse, our Finance Officer, forward to give us some information.
Yes, very exciting things. So back in the spring of 2023, Electricities, who helps host our current service, called North Star. North Star, came to us, and we're visiting the rest of the five cities, Electric Cities that are also still using North Star. And North Star basically presented them with a new contract that would make us have a forest update and kind of take away some of our specific specifications they made just for us, make it more cookie cutter was kind of their goal. And the price was astronomically more than what we're paying now. So we're earning less of a service for more money, basically. And that was the deal if all five of us stayed with North Star. If one of us left, the price went up. So for Greg and I, it was kind of a no-brainer to start shopping, which thankfully Electric Cities, which is one of their services, had kind of shopped for us and compared different. There's not a whole lot of options that can do utility and tax and cable and electric, you know. Well, we don't have cable. But anyway, so they did all that and kind of helped compare price. We did a demo and went through the due diligence process with them and decided on Tyler Systems, their product called ENCODE. We already use the Tyler software, their munis financial software, and I've had a great experience with that. I've had it for years. And basically, they've also bought a lot of the other options we would have gone to anyway. So kind of just going full Tyler products at the moment and kind of really trying to get our systems to integrate better together for a more seamless process from where we take the payment into how we process it, basically. So this contract will begin a nine-month process to switch. We'll have the systems running concurrently for at least a month, if not two or three. And Electric Cities is going to be kind of playing our middle man and intercessory to help us with the migration. So this is a long process. I think it's going to be really exciting. They also have their payment platform online is much more user-friendly for our customers. They're going to be able to see current utility billing information. We can pay online. It's a little bit more user-friendly and also be able to see their tax bills, which we've been having a lot of requests for. So it's going to be, I think it's going to be a really good thing.
Ultimately, we'll make the realtors happy.
Yes, we will.
Thank you so much. What's the wish of council?
Motion to award a contractor Tyler Technologies for utility and tax billing and for payment processing platform.
Thank you, Wendy. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And I'll just remind everybody, that money was budgeted in the budget, so no budget amendment is necessary.
Jesse, thanks so much. I have two appointments. The first is a mayor appointment to the Human Relations Commission. I want to appoint Christopher Pedro as a student representative from NCSSM to fill a current vacancy on the Human Relations Commission term to expire at the time of his graduation. And a mayor appointment for the Morganton Housing Authority. And I'd like to appoint Christopher Adam Pruitt to the Morganton Housing Authority Board to replace Lieutenant Brad Buchanan with the term to expire February 1st, 2027. Okay, then we have a 30-day notice that the Airport Authority, there'll be a vacancy, two vacancies on the Airport Authority. This is the 30-day notice. The terms expire December 31st of 2023. Next on our agenda is consideration of approval of a development grant at 400 Meeting Street LLC in connection with sale of city-owned property in the 400 block of East Meeting Street. Louis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This would be a development agreement, just to be clear. We're not talking about granting many money. As you will recall, back in January, actually, the city approved a contract to sell our property on Meeting Street between White and Church Street to 400 Meeting Street LLC for the purpose of developing residential project. We've extended the closing period a couple of times since then by action of the council, and closing is now set for the end of this week. The contract specifically requires, ad or prior to closing, that there be a development agreement between the city and 400 Meeting Street concerning the project on this property. Because as you will recall, we're selling this property for the specific purpose of developing a market rate residential project with both rental apartments and some townhomes. So that development agreement, after considerable negotiation, has now been proposed. I do note there are a couple minor changes from what was in the agenda summary. Specifically, the agreement requires that the developer submit its final plans to the city within 180 days, not 150. And also, to be clear, the city will have an option to repurchase if the project doesn't move forward. That would be to repurchase the entire property. We have with us tonight the representatives from 400 Meeting Street LLC, Nick and Kristen. And I believe they have some visuals that they'd like to present. Would one of you like to come forward and explain what we're talking about here?
Or both of you.
Or both, yes. Both of you can come forward. Don't be bashful, Nick.
Thank you all for letting us come and show this little presentation that we've got, just to give you an idea of what our plans are. We're really excited to get started. Clock starts to tick on Friday. I will say, Mr. Mayor, if you want to give us a development grant, we'd be happy to take it.
That's why we have a lawyer up here with me, Nick. He keeps me straight.
If you want to go back one slide, please. That's basically a 3D model that we had our architecture firm, which is Intech Group, provide for us so we could give you more of a visual of how that may look once it's done. You'll see the townhouses facing Meeting Street. The property that we purchased in October on Church Street, we're proposing 36 flats, what we're calling. And then our, kind of our higher-end corridor-style podium buildings will be the three large buildings there in the front. But you'll see on another slide, we've actually combined those into two buildings just to provide some efficiencies with elevators and stairs, but to also provide a larger green space in the middle of the project. Next slide. So the Meeting Street property is what we're calling Block 1. A, B, and C, those were the three buildings that we will likely go to 2. The 16-4 sale townhouses that front Meeting Street, and then buildings J, I, H, and G are our flats. Those are a little bit bigger units, more of a traditional walk-up type product, but very small and quaint and as far as the building footprint and fronting the street. And then we'll, on that same block, too, we'll be providing a tot lot. And then on Block 1, we'll be providing an urban dog park. So this is the latest and greatest rendering. We just didn't have the time to incorporate it into our full 3D model. But this is the proposed two-building layout. You can see it's more of an urban architecture. Each unit will feature a large front porch, a large balcony, and then the linear terrace there in the middle. The rendering on the top is the front of the building, and the rendering at the bottom is the back of the building that will have the tuck-under parking. So there will be 63 parking spaces available underneath those buildings. The unit mix is going to be 33 two-bedrooms and 21 one-bedrooms. This is a, just a very preliminary layout of the units. Kristen and I have worked pretty tirelessly with the architect and our market consultants to ensure that we're providing a product that people will appreciate and enjoy. Most of these units do feature, you know, larger walk-in closets, open kitchen areas with large islands, decent-sized living areas. And you can see the parking on the bottom, which will have our trash enclosure, so our trash will be located under the building to keep it out of sight, out of mind. Next. This is a elevation rendering of our flats that'll be located on Church Street, three-story buildings, also kind of modern urban architecture with a varying use of exterior materials. The nice thing about these units is, you know, typically, in a traditional apartment, it's double-loaded, meaning you only have windows on one end of the unit unless it's a corner unit. These will provide windows on both the front and the back of the unit to allow natural light to go through the units themselves. We feel this is a little bit different product mix than the corridor-style apartments, so it will provide, you know, a varying housing type just within our four acres of property that we'll be developing. There's a typical layout. These are larger two-bedroom and larger one-bedroom units. Again, good-sized kitchens with large islands and bigger living areas. And then each unit does feature a balcony, just like the units along Meeting Street. These are our townhomes. At the top right, that's the front elevation. That's what will be facing Meeting Street. These are four, well, these are three and a half stories, so three stories of living. And then the top floor is a walkout terrace with a roughly 200-square-foot bonus room. These units are roughly 1,800 square feet, two-car garage on the bottom level with a flex room that could be a bedroom or an office. That will face Meeting Street. And then the rear of the units will face a new alley that will be provided between the townhouses and the Meeting Street apartments. There's a kind of a typical layout. The unit to the left, or the drawing to your left, is the ground floor level with the garage and the flex room. Primary living area is on the second floor, two bedrooms on the third floor, and then a bonus room/flex space with an optional bathroom, and then the rooftop terrace. These are just some different color schemes, a lot of, everything will be either fiber cement or masonry, different color schemes. These are things we're still working on with our architect, and we'll obviously be coordinating with Wendy on that as well. And, you know, it's not just the vertical aspect of this project that we want to focus on. It's also the urban amenities that we can provide, whether it's landscaping, hardscapes, tot lots, dog parks. But ensure that we have spaces that not only our residents, future residents, can use, but also residents of the community. So again, we're excited to get started. Kristen and I had a conference call with our architect earlier today and told them to get their folks ready because it's time to go.
You're signing on the dotted line.
Yes, ma'am.
What's the wish of council?
I'll make a motion to approve a developmental agreement with 400 Meeting Street LLC in connection with the sale of city-owned property on East Meeting Street between White Street and Church Street, and to allow and direct the mayor and city manager to execute the agreement and make any technical or editorial amendments to it.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Wendy. Any questions, any discussion? For Nick or Kristen?
It's nice to see some renderings of possibilities since we first talked in January. So it's very exciting, very exciting.
Very exciting.
It's starting to take shape. But I'm just going to say one thing, because we talked about this when we were talking about the presentation. It's been since January, and we talked about this several times. And we're really excited, and they're really excited, and we want everybody to see the ideas. But what we saw is not exactly what we're going to end up with because it's going through design. And so you can't fixate on one of those images and think that's exactly what it's going to be. So I just wanted to say that.
And I know a lot of people are going to ask, the townhouses are for rent or for ownership?
Right now, they would be for sale.
Okay.
And now, obviously, market conditions could dictate that, but our plan right now is to sell those.
Any other questions? Nick, Kristen, thank you so much for your hard work. I had a motion. We got a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything else to come before City Council? I would like to remind everyone to vote if you haven't. Vote tomorrow. If that's all, we are adjourned.